Everybody, if you please stand and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, June 7, 2021. The time being 7:00 p.m. We're meeting in the Greensburg City Council's call to order at this time. Please silence all electronic devices. It should comply with the 96 of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. This is the request of participants to complete a survey that is available on the back of the table. Before we get started, I did want to take a moment and recognize that on Tuesday, June 1st, Brenda Dwyer resigned her post from the City Clerk Treasurer position. Brenda is a pillar of our community that has served Greensburg and Cater County in many capacities over her professional career. And Brenda's chosen to spend more time with her family and focus on her health. I'm honored to have served with her, and I continue to wish her all of the best. In the meantime, Betsy Wiley's been appointed by me as interim Clerk Treasurer until that spot can be filled. So with that, Betsy, please call the roll.
Daryl Pollan?
Here.
Jamie Kane?
Hi, Ada McKenzie?
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Here.
Rick Stott?
Here.
Okay, first thing is approval of the minutes, May 3, 2021. Any additions, edits, or corrections to those? If not, we take a motion. She will approve as presented.
Still move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving to whole business, Kevin Fleetwood, City Council District 1, ordinance 2021-10, Regulation of Golf Cart Usage on City Streets. This is the second reading. Kevin, anything further to add?
None. Ordinance is the same as it was one month ago. And no residents pause anywhere named, anything say about it, so. There's no one else in the audience that's any comments. I would prefer to finish it up. We're going to move on.
Okay. Could everybody please make sure that microphones are on? I didn't have mine on either. Kevin said there were no changes in. All right, Kevin said there were no changes in the ordinance from a month ago. If anybody have any questions from the council? Concerns? Anybody from the audience here to speak on this topic? Hearing none, who's taken a motion to approve 2021-10 on second final reading?
Still move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, up next, we have ordinance 2021-07. It's an additional appropriation. This was for the fire department radios that we talked about last month as well. It is in the amounts. Two hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars, thirty-two cents from 440 fire equipment. Any further comments or questions on that? This is second reading of that. If not, we take a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made by Viata, second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ordinance 2021-08 is additional appropriation for thirty-six thousand, six hundred sixty. This were the funds that were generated from the second round of COVID grant that was given from the state of Indiana, moving those into general capital outlay. Any further questions? If not, we take a motion to approve on second final reading.
Still move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Rick, second by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Up next, we have the bird scooter MOU that we discussed a little bit last month about the ability for a local or somewhat local vendor to operate a bird scooter sort of franchise and what our agreement is, or the MOU is concerning insurance operations, things like that. It is not a financial commitment from us. It doesn't really make us, we're not obligated to anything. We can always go in and do another ordinance's enforcement should we find something like that. I know there were some questions last month about that. Chris, did you have an opportunity to kind of review that? Did anything stand out to you?
I haven't reviewed that. No, I didn't find that it overly exposed the city to any liability or like that. It was a pretty standard memorandum of understanding for that type of kind of exploratory business connection. So they can look at some feasibility as to whether or not it would even work. From a legal standpoint, I didn't have any issues with anything that they put in there. There is an indemnification clause, so for some reason someone ordered to issue something against the city. There is some protection available to us for claims made. And there is also some insurance coverage, so I felt, I felt like the city's interest was probably protected. I don't know how feasible it would be, but I think legally it would fight.
As we talked about last month, I thought this was kind of an interesting business idea. It's not our, you know, business to decide whether maybe it'll work or not. But I do think it is important, and I'm glad that they asked us to sort of weigh in a little bit before they just, you know, bounce somebody and threw them out on the street. Of course, they throw out fifteen units at the potential launch. So any other questions?
Now, does this give them exclusivity rights to the city?
What is that first paragraph, three?
Um, it probably does in terms of, in terms of if we're going to go forward with any scooter company, we probably have to go forward with this scooter company. But it does not require us to take that next step. It just kind of limits who we can. Essentially, so we can't go court a bunch of different scooter companies. We just got to deal with them. But since I've never heard of any other scooter company, they don't, yeah. So, yeah, I do think that it does have an exclusivity provision.
Okay, other questions? I still sort of stand by my statement from last month that I think it's an interesting opportunity for us to try. We can always, if they find somebody, we find some issues with how it's happening. One, we could definitely try to, you know, contact the local person and try to get that fixed. And two, we could go through a regulation process, just like we have with the golf carts or I think in TPs or anything else. So I still think we have other avenues to pursue should we decide that we don't like it. And again, this isn't an agreement saying that it's going to happen. We've got a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding, and I will work with them on getting it signed.
So they have the anything to go on as far as, do they have any studies for the city as far as?
They've not shared any with me. They did reach out to us, saying that our market is the one that they're interested in targeting. So how much feasibility they did before that, I don't know. But it's not like we got a hold of them at to this point. They have sort of driven this conversation.
I guess I'm interested in knowing what is in this market that they are so interested in. We're not a college town. We don't really have a lot of youth in the town. That I'm saying that, I don't know the facts on that. Again, I just don't see the need, and I feel like that aesthetically, it's just gonna, it's not gonna be good. You're gonna see scooters laying all over the place. You're gonna see people dodging them on sidewalks. I just think it's a bad idea, in my personal opinion.
Do you agree with Daryl?
Kevin, or by any other thoughts?
Well, it's definitely a question. I mean, there's no guarantee that they're gonna do it.
Right.
Frankly, I find it hard to believe that if you study, they actually find this town profitable.
That, I mean, I guess in a sense, though, that's their responsibility. Right? Like, I mean, if they, I mean, if they want to go through, what they expressed to me originally was that they didn't want to go through that whole process and then for us to throw them all in the garbage truck, should they arrive.
True.
So that's what they'd like from us, is just to come and knock the bullocks off the street, get them.
I mean, I'm willing to give anybody that, you know, the opportunity.
Yeah, well, I guess, again, it's one of those things, if we let them try, and then we want to do more regulation later or we want to have a further conversation, assuming that it even does work, that is the first step to that.
Mayor, can I make a comment, taking off my, taking off my city attorney hat and just putting on my I'm an attorney in this town hat? Transportation is a very large burden to a lot of our citizens. We were having this conversation recently at the court staff that if we can't figure out a way to get some transportation issues addressed, it's very hard to get people to treatment. It's very hard for people to get jobs. I make a very good living trying to get people specialized driving privileges that they would not need for something like a scooter. Like, they, this would allow someone to live in one of the apartment complexes in town and make it out to Valio. I mean, if you think about it, our infrastructure already has available to it a lot of pathways and ways. You know, I could go from, on a scooter, I could go from Valio to Walmart and back to my apartment. Something that might normally have taken me all day if I had to walk it or find a ride. I could do it on one of these scooters. I understand, Councilman Pollan, your point, but I would say that not necessarily playing devil's advocate, putting on the, the other hat of what I see a lot of in this community, transportation is something that we don't have. We don't have that.
I would agree.
And so to have a company come in and really put no burden on the city other than to say, "We're not going to court some other company that isn't showing up at our doorstep." It doesn't seem like a huge burden to me, and it might give us something that would make us unique in cities our size.
And, Daryl, I think that was part of the conversation, too, was that they are trying to find markets that are smaller than college towns and other things. They've got those markets saturated. So now they're going into the next level, and how part of that works is they look for a local person to manage the fleet versus just random people managing scooters. I think the transportation point is very good, very valid, and is something that, you know, we have continued to struggle with in a sense that we also provide some funding annually to Catch a Ride, which operates at a very high dollar amount per ride because it's a rural transportation network. That service is needed as well, but this is a, you know, for like.
Is it affordable?
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of dollars.
I was gonna say, it's, it, so, and I will certainly assure you that my large bone structure doesn't get on a scooter, but I can tell you that my, my son has used them a lot in Indianapolis. He enjoys using them for sightseeing purposes. I know a lot of friends of mine that live in the Mass, the Mass Ave area of downtown Indy use them. They are, you know, available. They're not super expensive for a couple-hour trip. You know, you can kind of leave one, and when you need one, jump on it if you have an app on your phone. And again, I don't know if it really is feasible enough to be useful to us, but I could see why if I was a scooter company, I would look at us. I mean, we have, I mean, you have all of Lincoln. You have all of the various paths that we've installed around. You're, you're working on Park Road, trying to get the county to finish out Park Road. That would take you all the way out to the Bald Islands. I don't know, I don't know how expensive they are, though.
They're not terribly expensive. I've done one in a couple of years, but they're a couple. It's good to know.
Well, I don't have a problem giving them a shot, so I have.
Okay, a motion has been made by Viata to approve the memorandum of understanding. Obviously, there are four of you here to see things, so if it is a two-two, it would fail.
I'm sorry.
Seconded by Kevin.
Excuse me, if it's a tie, the mayor gives the tiebreaker. Is that correct?
I think if, in the event of a tie, I believe you do have.
Sure.
Not like a hundred percent certification.
Okay. Well, in that case, that was good. Daryl or Rick, any further conversation or questions or?
I still don't see where to go and help the city. I know it's transportation needed, but I don't see this being.
Answer to that. Daryl, anything else? Okay, Betsy, have an ask for a roll. I'll vote, please.
Viata?
Yes.
Daryl?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
I vote yes. Okay. Up next, we have Wilhelm, Wilhelm Construction, scope of work for the water treatment facility. This was discussed again in our last meeting about the request for thirteen thousand dollars from Wilhelm, who is our contractor for the water plant construction. They were to cease work for the week that the Cater County spent in our travel restriction red early on in the COVID-19 pandemic. So part of our conversation last month was for Chris to review that and get back to us as to whether he felt that we actually owed them those funds.
Uh, yes, and I did, I did have an opportunity to review both our contract as well as the general conditions, which, uh, the general conditions are actually put out by the engineering company and then by all of the parties, the contractor, Wilhelm, and the city, joining into that, and that becomes part of the contract documents. I also spoke with, briefly with a representative of the engineering company to see what he thought they might be pointing to. And there is a, a provision in there related to owner shutdown. There's a procedure by which if an owner says that we're going to stop work, there's a notice provision. But that I don't, my legal opinion is that's not applicable to what we're trying, what we're talking about because the, the city as the owner of the property didn't shut down work for no reason. It shut down work for a very specific reason, and I think there is a specific contract provision that addresses it, which is Article 12.03(c) in the general conditions, which provides, and I'll just read it so it's in the record. "If contractor is delaying the performance or progress of the work by fire, flood, epidemic, abnormal weather conditions, acts of God, acts or failures to act of a utility owner is not under the control of the owner or other causes not the fault of and beyond control of owner and contractor, then contractor shall be entitled to an equitable adjustment in contract times if such adjustment is essential to contractor's ability to complete the work within the contract. Such an adjustment shall be contractor's sole and exclusive remedy for the delays described in this paragraph." So my reading of that provision is that if the reason for the delay was beyond the control of both the contractor and the owner, their sole remedy is an extension of time to complete the contract. It is not a, it is not an increase of money, which is what, here, I believe they were requesting both, thirteen thousand plus an extension by seven days. My recommendation, based on the reading of the contract and the general conditions, would be that the city agreed to the seven-day extension as the contract time extension they requested and deny payment of the thirteen thousand dollars.
I also confirm that the contract had already been extended seven days. So that part is already done, so really it's all about the money. Any other questions or concerns, comments on that? What I would like from you is a vote to approve the payment of that or not. So whoever would like to make the motion, whichever voting.
I'll make the motion to not stay the amount that they're asking for.
Motion has been made to deny payment by Daryl, second by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. I will refer to it then tomorrow. First thing, under new business, we have is Aaron Stoner. He is with Enterprise. He has a bit of a presentation, representation for us. There is a portion of the packet that all of you should have received that he has for this. Obviously, he's joined in by Zoom, so we will have time for questions. If you have a question, please speak clearly into the microphone so that he can hear us. Aaron, can you still hear us at this meeting?
Awesome. Thanks very much for, for allowing me to join. Appreciate everybody's time today. As mentioned, I am with Enterprise. We're the much less recognizable division of the company. I work in our fleet management division. Really what I do is take the concepts that have made the rental operation a profitable entity over the years. And I apply those same concepts to different cities, counties, commercial businesses. Really, anyone who operates a fleet or vehicles, we try to share with them information to keep their costs down as much as possible. I specifically spent quite a bit of time in the local government space. The reason for that is I found it's a really neat thing we can do to help folks, you know, take advantage of some of the things that are already in place. Some of that being, you all can already find vehicles extremely effectively. What I've seen as I've gotten out in the market and understood under some of the different challenges is that budgets are tight. There's never quite enough money for vehicles. Funding and be able to replace as much as possible is likely, likely replace it, but also replace it as cost effectively as we possibly can. So what we've been able to do is combine cities and county buying power with Enterprise's ability to use our resources and forecast the minutes for any time to move out of the vehicle. And if we can, if we can sort of set up that whole cost of the vehicle lifecycle, and I always like to say, buy what you end in mind. Let's buy a vehicle, know what we're getting out of it, let's know why we're getting out of it, and let's let the dollars and cents be the driving force behind that. If we can do all that, we can also set up some pretty creative and flexible financing to allow cities and counties to be more, but less when it comes to budget dollars. So I'm going to share my screen with you and walk you through some analysis that I've done. So really quickly, the current situation, I, I profiled all light duty vehicles one ton and below within the city. So twenty-six vehicles fell into that category. Thirty-eight percent of those vehicles are over ten years old, so obviously you see that. You think, okay, there's probably some pretty old vehicles there. When we have old vehicles, we're in a position where there's a higher likelihood, obviously, of, of higher dollar maintenance costs and just headaches in general. And there's all, there's, there's situations that are going to happen where the city, but also the corporates are going to have to be reactive. You know, they're, folks are going to come to you and ask for approvals, either replace a vehicle or incorporate extra money for a vehicle. What we want to do again is to be proactive and to buy what you end in mind. And so our solution is to try to reduce this amount of age vehicles. The current age of the fleet is about eight and a half years old. And if buying trends continue, it would take the city ten point four years to replace the, the entire fleet. And so I'm going to propose something that I think we can do, we can replace the entire fleet much quicker. And if we're able to do that, the impact will be over ten years to save the city roughly four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars by lowering the average life cycle of ten years down to a five-year replacement model. And so I'll scroll down here and show you a little bit more about what that looks like. So again, I mentioned profiling up the fleet. You'll see, the city operates, you know, we've got sedan, we've got a few SUVs, but predominantly pickup trucks into one ton and below market, which is typically what we see. That totals up twenty-six vehicles. I mentioned the eight point four is the average age of the fleet. And then the average mileage is about sixty-eight hundred miles on an annual basis. Again, in the first year, I recommend let's get rid of eighteen over, ten years and a hundred thousand miles. And then let's tighten that up over time. And so we really kind of rip, rip the Band-Aid off in the first year, getting rid of the oldest vehicles, and then a couple per year, each year going forward. And then in that final twenty-twenty-five, you know, we take care of most of the newer vehicles that are currently in the fleet. And so this is to show you where you're at today and to show you where I'd like to, to take it over time. But this doesn't obviously justify anything financially. This is really just a plan. And so what I want to do is scroll down here and show you a little bit more detail. So if you look here, if you look at this yellow highlighted line, this is, this is put in place to show you what you are currently doing and what is representative of the dollars that are being spent on this fleet. So again, twenty-six vehicles, on average, just by looking at the model year of the fleet, about two and a half vehicles have been purchased per year. Obviously, you can't buy half a vehicle, but sometimes you're buying one or two vehicles, sometimes you're buying three or four, but this has kind of been the average. Knowing that vehicles are going to cost us roughly twenty-five, thirty thousand miles, our purchase budget is about seventy-one thousand dollars. And then getting back to the fact that the fleet is up there in age, thirty-eight percent is over ten years old, we're going to be spending some dollars in maintenance. Obviously, we're going to be doing our preventative maintenance, but the reality is that you're playing, you know, you have learned from the fleet to play close to the industry averages. And if we look at the industry average of a fleet that's that old, it's going to cost you about twenty-one cents per mile. You know, and that's all costs considered. You know, if you consider it's non-preventative, any labor hours and things like that. The other component, major component of cost would be fuel. Obviously, that's pretty easy to calculate. We were doing this in, in more friendly times at the, at the Palm, so we had two dollars per gallon. Obviously, it's at three now, so this number would only be higher. At two dollars per gallon, we figured twelve miles per gallon is probably pretty fair. Given again, the age, the fleet, the dual degradation we've experienced, and then also big three, that doesn't pick up. We think at sixty-eight hundred annual miles, that's how we come up with just under thirty thousand in fuel. And so adding these three numbers together, that's going to give us a benchmark fleet budget of about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So then what I do is I want to show you over ten years the impact of, of implementing our solution. And so what it looks like is, as I recommended, let's not, let's not pay the seventy-one thousand in cash. Let's go out and use our flexible lease, the lease ten different vehicles. We can do that for fifty-six thousand dollars in year one. We replace roughly forty percent of the fleet. We can also sell the city's vehicles on year being half. This is an extremely conservative number for what we give a sell those for. And I'll actually show you here, here in a minute, what the actual number looks like. But the benefit of replacing forty percent of the fleet is we're going to pick up some pretty significant maintenance savings. You know, forty percent of the fleet is only going to be doing an oil change over the course of a year. And we also remove the oldest of the old vehicles that are most likely to spend, spend money. We also pick up some fuel company, and the first year, we netted thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand dollar savings. So I'm sure you're saying to yourself, well, yeah, we're going to have to replace the rest of the fleet, and we're still going to have to carry the payments. That's exactly right. So you're going to see your payment numbers pick up over the years. But over the years, we also continue to sell a better quality vehicle that's more attractive to the secondary market. And so these lease numbers, combined with our ability to sell your vehicles, begin to offset while the operating expenses and maintenance and fuel continue to fall. So what you see is a net savings year in and year out. The way we're doing this is just by creating that cash flow tool and allowing you to pay proportion of the vehicle you're using, you're taking the best advantage of your buying power by still selling the vehicle when it's attractive to the secondary market. And we stuff, we show this twice over. We want to show this over a ten-year period so that we can show you, this isn't just a win in year one. This is something we can continue to deliver on. And I mentioned earlier, you know, we have one hundred percent retention among our local government clients. We've got dozens across the state. And it's because of the fact that we've got approval here in a year out because you're not contractually obligated to do anything with us after you lease your initial vehicle. You don't have to do ten years with us. You don't have to do 10 years with us if we can prove that we're saving you money and we're giving value at a partner. So again, over a 10-year period, we show $435,000 savings. And I think it shows a real opportunity. But what Mayor Marsh and I did a little deeper on and spoke last week about is the vehicles that are, that are up there in age. We've got, we've got a street water, sewer, drainage station department. We've got a group of vehicles here, the total of an equity, the $95,500. So if we replace everything that's five years or older, we'd be in a place where we can sell these vehicles. We take them up and sign that we've been marketing to our network of buyers and we maximize what we can get. So this is a conservative side-on scene number. The city will get the full proceeds of whatever we sell those vehicles for. Well, if we replace those vehicles with like-to-like vehicles, our total budget cost for next year will be 83,000. So if you do math there, we sold them for 95, we can at least back vehicles, bring new vehicles and refresh the fleet for 83,000 in the first year. And so how it came up to that 83,000 is I, again, replaced like-to-like vehicles. So we have a one-time trust here. I factored in about $10,000 in aftermarket because most of them are going to be either dump body or utility bed. Here's your monthly payment. Your annual payment would be 8,300. There were four vehicles in this category, so that totaled up to 33,000. Same as true for the three-quarter ton, there were, here's your annual payment, four vehicles of that, of that type. So that's going to be 27,000. You can see the half sum, there were three, and then there was one full slice of dance. So the total of these numbers is how we got to the 83,000. So one quick thing I want to mention on our lease structure, because anytime somebody hears, you know, funding their lease, everybody thinks about what you could do at a local dealership, you know, over mileage charges, wear and tear charges, all those sorts of things. Our lease functions very differently. So the three-quarter ton, we can go out and buy that vehicle for just under 32,000. What we do is we depreciate that vehicle 429.50 each month, in this case, for 12 months. So if we, you know, 430 times 12, that's roughly $5,000. So we finance the 31,000, or excuse me, 32,000 down into 927 at the 26,661. What at the end of one year, 10,000 miles, which is about the average of your guys' usage, we can actually sell this vehicle for 35,000 based on what the resale market is currently doing, which is more than what you bought the vehicle for in the first place. And so what we've done is we replace a vehicle and give you a very, very logical number of 6,800 that we can cover with the vehicle we currently own and apply that. You don't even have to write a check for that. But then at the end of the period of time we sell on year B and A for 35,000, we pay off our beginning book value and now the city has 8,300 in equity. Again, 8,300 is going to be able to pay for the next year's lease. So every vehicle is a little bit different. I'm not, I would never tell you that every vehicle is fit to replace after a year, you can just flat out not. I would never replace a vehicle that's utility or dump bed, these I'd put on a more than five-year term. With the sedan, we found the sweet spot is closer to three years and 30,000 miles. But we're going to evaluate every vehicle you have. We're also going to give it your department heads and understand their utilization, have what they need and what's feasible from a replacement standpoint, and then we're going to come with a recommendation. So the key here is that we bring you an opportunity. We want to be a fleet consultant to be a partner to you, but ultimately you get to make the decisions. I've quoted Chevys, but if you wanted to see Ford or Chrysler, whatever the case may be, that's your decision. And we inspect them based on the needs of each department. So that was a lot of me talking. We've got a lot of flexibility in our programs. And the biggest, the biggest hurdle is that this is different than what folks are used to. But we're really confident in what we can deliver and I think the, the network of clients we have around the state will speak to that as well. So thanks for, again, thanks for the time and I would love to hear any questions.
Thanks, Aaron. Questions for Aaron? And again, I remind you to speak clearly into the microphones.
Aaron, curious why you went the one ton, 60 months, and you stood the 2,500s and the 1,500s for 12 months?
Yeah, that's a very good question. The reason is because what I'm assuming, and I haven't had the level of conversation to have the exact dollar, but what I'm, what I'm making the assumption on is that if we look over at this fleet list and you look at some of the GMC 3500s, Chevy 3500s, my guess is that these vehicles have some, some level of significant aftermarket, like utility bed, dump body, whatever the case may be. And what's usually not feasible for our clients is to plan on flipping out of that thing every single year because you're going to either sell the bed and go buy a new bed, or you're going to take that bed off, put it on a new chassis. And a lot of times, folks don't want to have that kind of frequent turnover on that type of vehicle. And so on that, a lot of times I'll extend the lease, the whole lease counter. Now that being said, what's great about our program is if you guys decide you want to sell it after three years, we're going to evaluate the book value, we're going to evaluate the fair market value. You're very likely to be in a positive equity position throughout the lease and we can sell it at that point. The same goes for the three-quarter ton. If you said after a year, you want, you see there's an opportunity, but we're actually just going to extend it one more year and we'll, you know, we'll reevaluate next year. No problem at all. We extend the lease, you paid the 6,800. So this is not, nothing you see here is set in stone. This is a first pass recommendation. Everything is very customizable. Hopefully that makes you proud.
And then as far as your fees, the only fees you guys have with this program is what you're, on your spreadsheet, you're showing us a monthly management fee for each one of these vehicles?
Yes. We make money in a few different ways. We're always very transparent with that. So this management fee is, is actually structured and that's what pays for our, that's based on me and that's based on our team to provide you ongoing consultation. And we have structured to meet with you and your team on a regular basis throughout the year to ensure this thing's working. But in addition to that, we make a minimum money on interest. Our money is out of breeze. This isn't straight profit, I mean. And then we also make money behind incentives, which that's, that's a lot like a dealership would make money. So the manufacturer is going to pay things like holdback or finance credit, they call it different things. But basically, we make money when we purchase that, that vehicle directly from the manufacturer. And that's not taking anybody out of the city's hands and that's not money that the end user typically participates in unless you're, you know, Amazon's probably getting pieces of it buying, you know, thousands of vehicles. But those are kind of the three core ways that we make money. And it's enough for us to do business and obviously make earnings that make sense.
What interest rate did you use when you figured, when you have the monthly interest pulled out? What do you, what do you use for interest percentage?
So the interest rate is based on a three-year treasury bills. Most of our government clients, in order to, a lot of, a lot of the piggyback, what was called, a group called Sourcewell, I'm not sure if Green's Group is you like that, but we ranked highest in Sourcewells, due to management RFP. And not to anyway dodge your question, but most folks utilize that so that they can get the best rate they possibly can through us. And what that looks like is treasury bills plus 350 basis points. In this particular example, that is, I believe, 3.8, maybe 3.85%. So I'd use, yeah, that's what I've used for this pricing. Making assumptions, does that make the best pricing?
And then on your expected sales price, let's just use the 2,500 for example. You're expecting that you're going to sell that truck for about $3,200 more than what we're paying for it. Do you use that on current market? Or are you using history to determine what that truck's worth?
I think I
Get an acquisition cost of 31.8, but you're saying at the end of the year, in so many miles, it's going to be worth $35,000. So does that appreciate it in value?
So what, what we do, first of all, first of all, to start with, the way we get our buy price is we pass along the invoice cost, the best possible incentive we can give the manufacturer. You guys know, you know, by, you know, state PPA or the agency government, the incentives to local dealers, you get a great box. So you're starting way ahead of the game with this $32,000 at the beginning. So we pass along how much is a great box. In addition to that, where we're sitting right now, the resale market is at historic highs. So what we try to do when we forecast out is, again, understand on the rental side, we've got a couple million vehicles. We've got a, we've got a really good idea of what vehicles are going to be worth down the road. Because again, that's how we make money on that side of the business. We use the same team that they utilize to evaluate what vehicles are going to be worth down the road, where the resale market is going. We assess a very conservative side-on scene number, which is, which is what all these numbers are. None of these are, we are certainly not shooting for the moon. We like to under promise and over deliver. But where we see things going a year from now with, not to go down the rapid hole here, but with liquidity shortage and the fact that trucks are just going to be very, very difficult to come by if they're not purchased this summer, people are going to be paying and are going to like for, for good vehicles this time next year. And so that's what we're forecasting. It's very conservative. We take, again, take the people's consent, we market them essentially in a silent auction format to a group of buyers. We have all over the state, all over the country. And essentially, we have a team that's paid incentivized to maximize what we can get for our clients' vehicles. So we sell typically about 20% to 25% better than what a trade is ever would be. Because obviously, a dealership has got to work in a little bit of a reason to turn around and sell it.
I guess I got one last question on quick monopolizing the conversation. At the beginning of your cover, the presentation, you made the comment that you guys do some unique things with this plan. I guess my question would be, what's unique between Enterprise and other companies like Donlin or LeasePlan?
I'm sorry, I kind of missed that. I'm trying to hear you.
Earlier in your presentation, you made, you mentioned that Enterprise does some unique things that kind of sets them apart. My question was, what makes Enterprise any, what's unique about Enterprise that Donlin or LeasePlan can't provide?
Oh, yeah, great question. Yeah, so really the biggest difference about Enterprise is that just like you drive around, you see a, you see a, well, you guys may not pay attention the way I do because I work for the company, but, you know, in basically every community in Indiana, there's going to be Enterprise or a car. They take it very seriously because they want to be a local company, working with a local body shop, working with a local dealership and a part of the community. We're very similar, although I'm not in every, you know, town in Indiana. I'm headquartered on the west side of Indianapolis and I focus on the state of Indiana. Pre-pandemic, obviously, all this was going on in person and, you know, we would be going next, you know, going to meet with all our clients, obviously, we're getting back to that. We focus on, on having a more hands-on approach than a lot of the names of the company you mentioned. The other major thing is that, for whatever reason, and I'd like to say this way, they don't, they don't, those companies don't spend time on, on opportunities that are really under a couple hundred vehicles. And they certainly don't spend much time in the government space. So Enterprise and myself found an opportunity to be a local provider and to provide some opportunities and share some concepts that quite honestly, a lot of cities and counties just haven't heard from anyone else and other folks just aren't taking the same local approach to come out and talk to folks like yourselves.
Thank you.
I'd say beyond that, I'd be pretty confident even if they did. We're definitely the quickest growing fleet management company. I think when I started, we were roughly seventh. We're, we're either at first or close to the first now. So we've, we've just grown quite a bit, invested a lot in our technologies, the variety of solutions.
Any other questions for Aaron? Other questions? Okay. Thanks, Aaron. We appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone. That was great.
Okay, that was mostly for information, conversation, education, as we kind of look at what's next and what options or opportunities we want to pursue. So there's not really direct action required with that. Any further conversation in a moment? Okay. Brian Robbins, Director of the Economic Development Court, is here to talk about tax abatements. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. The tax abatement committee met last week to review the CF1, the compliance forms that are required to be submitted for any outstanding tax abatements. I remember the mayor and everybody was there. I don't know if you guys want to comment or anything like that.
Okay, we went through them all, we looked at them, we discussed, we looked at performance metrics that they report on, jobs, incomes, different components, and came up with the document that Brian prepared for us.
Does anybody get a comment on the spreadsheet, the list of it? It tells you the resolution number, the year they started, whether it's a personal property or pre-estate tax abatement and the year it's going to be completed and if they turn it in on time, as well as the parcels. And the recommendations of the committee is to accept all of the CF1 submitted with the following exceptions. Abatement 2019-9 is granted a one-year extension to be renewed only if substantial construction commences prior to May 1st, 2022. Abatement 2020-19 is also granted a one-year extension to be renewed only if substantial construction commences prior to May 1st, 2022. And abatement 2018-3 was found to be in non-compliance pursuant to the state of Indiana COVID-6-1-1-12-1-3 and thus they are suggesting that it be denied.
Chris, you've reviewed that for non-compliance?
Yes, I have reviewed that and concur that it is in non-compliance.
Any questions for Brian? Or I guess by it and I attempted to.
Now, the process for that, the abatement in 2018, the property owner will be receiving a letter to say he or she is in non-compliance and that there will be a formal resolution at the next city council meeting of state of essentially revoking that abatement. So just to make them aware. So that's the process. I think this is the first time we've actually revoked the abatement.
Yes, that is, that is exactly correct. I've already prepared the notice and they give an opportunity at the next, next council meeting to voice their opinion and see if they can somehow bring it into compliance. I don't think they will be able to.
Anything else? If not, we take a motion to approve and grant the tax abatements as approved, with those exceptions that were mentioned. So a motion's been made by Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signal up a second aye. Folks opposed. Up next, the Cedar County Small Business Grant update.
Yeah, I just asked the mayor for a quick second to talk about the funding that the county received that is open to the city free and private courses for Cedar County. They received a quarter of a million dollars from the COVID funds at the state level. Similar to what our, our program was last year, the city had, we'll be giving out grants up to $10,000 for small businesses, locally owned businesses that were affected by the pandemic last year. Invite anybody to get in touch with me and check out our website, ppcgdc.com for the application materials. We are accepting applications through next Monday. But we want to get that money back out into the local economy to help our businesses. So I appreciate it. I would love to promote that.
Any questions for Brian? Like you said, that grant last year administered through the city was available to businesses in your county. We actually had some outside the city that applied for it too. We gave it all out and we actually gone through the first year of reporting and everybody did all the reporting. I don't think anybody's losing it, so that's a, that's a good news. Anything else for Brian? Okay. Thank you. Please do. Up next, our Chief, Nathan Sturmer, recognition ceremony invitation.
Good evening. I just want to formally and in person invite you to our fire department recognition ceremony that's going to be held on Wednesday, the 16th of this month at 6:00 PM here at the Chamber Hall slash EOC to recognize firefighters throughout the last Chamber Hall slash EOC to recognize firefighters throughout the last year who have retired, been promoted, or recently been hired, whether it's off probation, their first year, actually achieved a rank of an officer, as well as our retirees who were never able to officially celebrate them in their thanks. So I want to invite everyone out for that. There will be a small reception afterwards as well to involve our retirees, both recent and not so recent, and then all members of our department. So if you're able to make it, that'd be great. We'd love to see you. And that's it. Appreciate your time. 6:00 PM.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Okay, up next, 2021-11 is an additional appropriation for a sick time payout for Chief Bridges with his pending retirement. And usually it's asked for by the drug supervisor. So I'm here this evening asking for you to approve $7,400 out of public safety funds to pay out Chief Bridges' sick time. We will have to do a second reading on this, of course, but this is the first step. So that was 2021-11.
I don't remember the vote accepting his resignation.
Fair point. I don't think you, yeah, good luck. I think he's checking out. But I'm sure he would like to get, to get paid, he'd like to make that.